Let's rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to open this March 17th Commissioners Meeting, showing that all three Commissioners are present, county attorney, and our auditor. So, at this point, we've got, let's see. Matt, you want to start it out?
Sure.
Get a few of these special things done.
Bear with me, the sheriff typed out quite a bit, so.
Okay.
The sheriff had sent you guys our Flock LPR agreement last week to add a unit to our inventory, and we have money available for that. Holly, is there any issues with that contract?
No.
Any issues from the Commissioners to move forward?
Didn't see any.
The jail report was sent out last week, any questions on that?
We've got to vote on this contract.
Yeah, because we get signature pages, right? Yeah. So, you guys, any?
I'll make a motion to approve the Flock contract.
Second. Okay, a motion made in second. Any other? Not? All in favor? Here's 3-0. Okay, Matt.
Any questions on the jail report that was sent out last week? February's monthly reports were also sent out, any questions on that? All right, we received two resignations last month from merit deputies, we'll be accepting applications until the 28th, and then we're going to have testing on April 5th, and then we're going to do backgrounds and interviews from there on. We had requests to hire Mike Cannon back, he was a jailer at the jail, he has since retired, but he had to have a separation of 30 days for perf, and we would like the blessing to rehire him as a part-time jail officer.
No problems at all with him for anything?
No, no problems, he was a 20-year DOC Corrections Officer before he came to us, and then he finished out his retirement with us, and...
I'll make a motion to hire, what did you say the gentleman's name was?
Mike Cannon.
Mike Cannon, back.
Okay. Motion made in second to hire Mike Cannon back, all in favor? Carries 3-0.
We recently authorized one of our deputies to become a part-time TFO, which a TFO is a task force officer with the ATF. Basically, the only thing that it does is it opens some doors for us federally with cases, where we have a federal officer in our back door that we can take cases federally if they don't fit stateside, and they reimburse us for overtime money to keep money out of county pockets, so it's a win-win really. We will bring a recommendation to the merit board on March 28th for the corporal position approved by the council last month, and then we invoiced $103,205 for the month of February for holding federal, DOC, and out-of-county inmates.
Say that number one more time to me, please.
Yep, $103,205. The population as of this morning, we had 106, 52 of those being grant county holds, 12 of them federal holds, and one DOC. Any questions on any of that?
How many were friends?
12 federal.
Thanks.
And the pole building is back to moving forward after taking the winter off, the concrete was poured last week, and gutters and downspouts will be put on this week.
What all you got to do to it after that, then, is that?
Doors.
Doors, and then they got to come back, and I think they're coming back this week, they're going to pour the exterior pad that meets up to the driveway, yeah, the approach.
Probably a month or two yet before you get in it, before he gets in it.
I hope, yeah.
Who knows?
Depends how quick they get back. Chad will be getting his final appropriation request out of the maintenance fund together for the council to get things finished up, and we talked to Cops Gear last week, Cops Gear is our outfitter for the K-9 cars, or for all of our patrol cars, and he is hopeful to get our Tatos done in a couple weeks, so, moving along there. Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Got it all the way. Want to go ahead with department reports? John? This is low on the lengthy side, too.
A little bit. Bear with me. I got a few things for you here tonight. Start out with permits. The first one I have here is permit request 25-5, Jackie Palmer with NIPSCO, she's requesting a permit to install SCADA monitoring equipment on an existing NIPSCO facility 50 feet west of 200 North and State Route 25. If you want, all these are the same basically from NIPSCO, I'll just read through them.
Yeah, go ahead, read through those.
Permit 25-6 is also from Jackie, from NIPSCO, she's wanting to put the same type of equipment, 545 feet west of the intersection of Northwest Lake Shore Drive and North Lake Shore Drive, Naiamalake. 25-7, she's requesting a permit to install the equipment 2,545 feet north of the intersection of 300 West and State Road 114. And the last one from her is request permit 25-8, and she's wanting to install this 500 feet south of State Road 17, on Pearl Street, Grass Street. I've checked all these, and there's already equipment there, they're just replacing it.
Replacing it? Okay.
I didn't see any issues with any of those.
I'll make a motion to approve the four permits from NIPSCO.
There was three.
No, there's four.
Four permits from NIPSCO that John just presented to us.
Second. Motion made in second to approve the four permits from NIPSCO.
I'm sorry, this one? Did I give you three?
Yeah, you gave me three, I thought there was a four, I thought you read four.
Yeah.
Okay. Four permits. Motion made in second, all in favor? Motion carries 3-0.
The next group I got is from Paul Slisher, request 25-9, he's requesting a permit to cross 25 West, 800 feet north of 700 South, 12-inch tile. It's going to require a road cut, because it's a gravel road.
So you're on right.
Yeah, and it's, it gets like one car a day.
I'll make a motion to approve the permit by Paul Slisher.
Okay, motion made, seconded, all in favor? 3-0, carries.
The next one, 25-10, is also from Paul Slisher, he's requesting a permit for road cut, install a 10-inch tile on 375 South, 400 feet west of State Road 25. It's a smaller tile, and he's asking, it's a paved road, this road's a four on their paser.
Would be redoing that for long, won't you?
Most likely.
So you're telling me he's cutting across it and you're all right with it, is that correct?
Yeah, it's kind of on the line of where we draw the line of boring, and will you tell us you're okay with it or not?
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the second permit by Paul Slisher.
Second. All in favor? 3-0.
Next one is permit request 25-11, again from Paul Slisher, and he's requesting a permit to directional bore under 250 West, 300 feet south of 550 South, again for a 10-inch tile.
Okay, under again, you're good with it?
Yes.
And that being a...
See, that one was...
That's a, that's a bore.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, I will make another motion for Paul Slisher's permit across the road.
Second. Motion made in second to approve Paul Slisher's permit, all in favor? 3-0.
The next one here is permit 25-12 from Paul Slisher, and he's requesting a permit for road cut on 750 South, 100 feet west of 125 West to install an 18-inch tile. It's too big to bore.
Are you good with that?
Yeah.
Have things patched up, fixed up afterwards?
Yeah. I hate to see a decent road cut, but...
I'll make another motion for Paul Slisher on this last permit.
Second. Okay, motion made in second for Paul, I guess it's permit number 25-12, they require a road cut, it's all in favor? Motion carries.
Next one is 25-13, Paul Slisher again, he's requesting a permit for road cut to install 10-inch tile on 550 South, 500 feet east of 500 West, and this road is, I'd call it a junk road. I don't have a problem with even cutting that at all.
That's the one that we just closed, isn't that gravel?
No.
That's not gravel?
No, this one would be Mark Rear's road.
Oh, okay.
Up there by his house, if you know that road, it's, it's one that we need to redo.
We do.
So all, this permit from Paul Slisher, it's 25-13, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, motion made in seconded, all in favor? Motion carries 3-0.
So I'm going to shift gears a little, the next permit is 25-14 from Michael Hammond, Geo-Technical Consultants, and he requests a permit for four bore soil borings. These borings will be about 8 inches in diameter, 10 to 15 inches deep, they'll backfill with cement and binanite grout, little binanite chips. This one, there's four places having put on this one permit, and it's going to be extending 4500 feet north of 100 South on 50 East.
Who'd you say was doing that?
Geo-Technical Services.
Now, they're, when you say that, they're not...
They're, they're going to bore...
Crossing the road, they're boring under the road?
They're going to bore either right at the edge of the road, possibly in the, in this road, but it'll be a little hole, straight down. They're taking soil samples.
Right. Okay. All right.
Motion to approve that permit.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve this permit, number 25-14, all in favor? Motion carries.
And the next one is also from Geo-Technical Consultants for four bore soil borings, going to do the same backfill method, and this is extending 3,000 feet east of 50 East on 100 South.
Okay.
Basically, right west of New Holland.
And this is the same thing as the other one, basically?
Yes, it's, it's the same project, I had him put them in two different permits because it extended on two different roads.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve the permit for...
25-15.
Permit number 25-15?
Second. Okay, motion made in seconded to approve permit number 25-15, all in favor? Motion carries 3-0.
So I'm out of permits.
That was a wrap. I thought my inbox was going to flood when they opened out those attachments.
I know, it took me about all day to put all this together for you. So, the guys have been patching holes, running a brush cutter, they finished cutting trees with RMC, we wrapped that up in the season, we've been working on great, great in gravel roads, patching's the big thing right now, because you, if you've been anywhere in the county, you've seen those blowups. We did get the millings at Rochester all crushed, so when we get done with our patching and such, we'll start on those. The next thing I have is, at the last Commissioners Meeting, yes, last Commissioners Meeting, we opened bids up, contingent on the NDOT awards for community crossings, we were awarded our full award for community crossings, our paving projects, and we had a contract, USI looked it over, EMB had the lowest bid, USI worked it over, they recommend them, so, did you get a copy of this?
I only remember these.
I'm not, I think I emailed it to you, but I'm not 100% sure. Anyway, I'm recommended as long as Holly's good with it, you approve those bids, we're at, it's been a while, that, does that contract match your money for community crossings?
Yes.
Okay, so you're good with it?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
It's on 950 and on 550.
250 South between the city limits of Kiwanah and the county line, 550 South between State Route 17 and the county line, 950 South between 17 and 900 West.
Okay.
And when there's a second call this summer, we intend to, because they have a million and a half match this time around, we only went for slightly over a million, we're planning on taking that second call and applying it to Bridge 106, which is on 400 South between 1 and 200 West.
You can carry on while she looks at that if you want, and we'll come back when she gets it over.
The next thing I had on my agenda was the spring bids, we opened those Friday for oil and patch and stuff, I'm assuming Holly's had a chance to look those over.
These, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the spring bids.
Second. Motion made in seconded to approve the spring bids, all in favor?
The next thing I had was a consulting contract, we had, the RFP, too much going on, for bridge inspection, four-year contract, we do that every four years, and we scored, SJCA got the highest score this time around, and they're here tonight, if they want to answer any of your questions, but this is the contract that they provided me.
Has Holly looked at it over?
Which one is that?
SJCA for the bridge inspection.
I know I said that.
You said that one to me?
Let her look it over.
Let me see it, just to make sure that that's the one.
It's probably a boiler plate, right?
Yeah, I look at all of them, but then I...
Yeah, it's just a standard.
Specifically remember.
Slightly higher fees than the last four years, reasons for that, we have underwater inspections this time around, you have those every six years, I think it's six, am I right? Or is it seven, five? And inflation slightly up, but I was talking with them, and we're actually lower than a lot of counties that are coming in this spring.
What was the number on it, do you know it right offhand? We'll look at it. I read it.
They mind.
This is what? EMB?
Yeah, Community Crossings.
Yep.
Community Crossings. We got the contract here for EMB paving for community crossings, you guys, we all had the chance to look it over, I have a bid to accept, or a motion to accept the bid.
So move. Second.
Okay, all in favor? Motion carries 3-0. What was the bid on that EMBs, I didn't see it, just a million and something?
A million, what was the...
On EMB?
Yeah, we read out the price.
Okay, I gotta find it.
I'll see if I can find it on this one, I can't remember.
Millions, $166,171.95.
This one's $280,905.68. $280,905.68, that's for the bridge. Okay, did we vote?
We voted for you.
We did all this, okay, all right, I'll get a look.
We haven't got the spring bids yet.
Okay. Yeah, we didn't.
Yeah, we did, yeah, we did that first. They say too many bids here.
Spring bids.
We already did it, I'll second it, we'll make sure we do it.
Yeah.
We got confused, we're doing too many, I'm the one.
Motion made in second to accept the spring bids, all in favor?
You already did that one.
EMB did we do?
No, you already did the spring bid.
The EMB?
Just now did...
Okay, we didn't accept EMB.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And this, we've done the bridge, now.
You have not made a motion for the bridge.
Okay, we need the bridge now. Okay, got the contract here for SJCA for bridge inspection?
For $280,905.26, I think it was, I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay, motion made in seconded to accept the bid for SJCA for bridge inspection, all in favor? Motion carries 3-0.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Caught back up there?
I think so.
I was getting lost. I was getting lost myself, to be honest. I have one more contract for you tonight, and it is a spray contract with Midwest Spray Team, they've, for the last three or four years, they've been spraying all over bridges, large structures, and then we divvy up the county by thirds, and they do our small structures. The contract is exactly the same as it's been for the last few years, $52.50 for large structures and $42 for small, and it's not to exceed $15,000, so it's the same as the last few years, and they've, I feel like they've done us a good job, we haven't had any complaints, and things have went well with them.
Okay. Will you guys, you agree with this?
Yeah, I'll make it, you want to do it, or you want to...
I'll make that motion to approve the Midwest Spray bids.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion made in seconded to accept the contract for Midwest Spray Team sales, $52.50 for large structures, $40 for small, not to exceed $15,000 for the year. All in favor? Motion carries 3-0.
The next thing I have for you is the highway year-end report, I sent that to you a week ago, for you to look it over.
He sent that to me a week ago?
Mm-hmm, sent it with all this other...
Oh, yes, yes, okay, come in. Yeah, I was going to say.
All sheets of numbers, and numbers, and numbers.
Everything balanced out.
That's good. Crystal got broken well, right?
She did, and she had, pretty much they had it done in January, so...
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the...
I lost my train of thought.
Annual operation report.
Annual operation report for the county highway.
Second. Motion made in seconded to accept the annual report, county highway, all in favor? Carries 3-0.
Next thing I wanted to talk to you about, that county auction is coming up here this weekend, we've got two new trucks coming in, I'd like to ask you permission to sell one of the older Max we have, it's pretty well... If you guys are all right with that, we'll part with that truck.
I'm good with it.
And, next thing I have, I want to make sure that I write the number here.
He went kidness when he said he was going to work this, didn't he?
Well, I knew when I saw that packet and all the attachments that he had, and then when you opened it up, then there was...
March Madness.
More, more pages.
Next thing I wanted to talk to you about was purchasing a new roadside mower, we have it in our budget to do that, it is the same mower we bought last time, last summer, it's a flail mower, it's a Samaz from Truland Equipment, it gave us the same price as last year, after this one, they, their prices go up a couple thousand dollars, they're coming in at 12.9, we had an extremely good season with the one we bought last year, I think they hardly put any parts into it, just a couple seasons mowing with that pace for the mower versus what we've been using in repairs and everything.
Are you trading that old one in now?
We're looking at trading in one of the, we have five mowers right now, so we would look at trading one in on it.
Want to let this one in.
Right. Okay.
I don't have a price for the trade-in, because we haven't got that far with it yet.
And you have that budgeted?
Yes, we put that in the budget for this year.
Okay. I don't have a problem with it.
I'm good with it.
No, I'm good.
And, leave, the last thing I have, you'll see a transfer request for $800 from Bittenstone to cover consult fees, which we need to make an appropriation, we'll do that next month to make up, we didn't have enough in consult fees because of that Bridge 106, after the budget was approved, we decided to move forward with that, and so we got to bring money in to cover that bridge. But we need $800 to get us by until the appropriations is done.
Okay.
And that is all I have.
I would hope so.
Transfers?
Nope, you're good. Thank you, John, I appreciate it.
Let's see, who's next going across, Don? Prevention, which Don? Don Sewell?
Unless, unless the other one wants to go, we can trade off. Evening, gentlemen. Just a few things here, just to go over some of the EMA volunteer and regular EMA information. Thursday, July 6th was a volunteer meeting, we did a micro-training afterwards, it's something that we've kind of set precedence for, we're going to start doing, it's just a real quick micro-training after every session of EMA meeting. This last week was over the light tower, the light tower got utilized on the fatality we had out on 9, sorry, 31 and 31, so we brought everybody up to speed, make sure that they knew the operations of the light towers and so on and so forth. The other thing to bring you up on is, Monday, the 10th, was the LAPC and the Fire Chief meeting, and it was over at Fulton, and we've got four more, what we are calling our teams meeting, to get ready for the June 11th full-scale exercise, so there's four more teams meetings that we'll have with LAPC to get ready for that full-scale, and I'll bring that, make sure that everybody's still aware of that. With that being said, I was asked today by two different departments, first responders, to come in and do them, kind of like a, a real quick, bring us up to speed of how we're going to operate. I cannot disclose what's going to happen in our full-scale exercise, but I can bring them up to speed on, here's how structure works. And we did that at our, the class that I held, but some of those weren't able to make it, so they've asked me to come separately and do those for them. June 11th, I had a meeting, myself, Brittany, a few other people, we had a meeting with Mayor, with Trent, and he's looked in, you guys know we've had the Everbridge system in place, and him and a few others are looking towards going with a different system. It's nothing final, we're just out there looking right now, there's a group that's been asked to come and look at, so when that gets closer to time, Brittany or myself, I'm sure one will bring that to your attention at that point. The other one, and I'm sure Brittany's going to hit on this one too, because obviously the two of us are side by side in things that we, we do, is our tornado sirens, we have set up a committee, for lack of better words, to go over some of our issues with our tornado sirens, and Brittany, I'll let her touch the rest of that, but that was another thing I had this on my schedule the last couple weeks. I'm also putting together for EMA, and I already put the feelers out this morning, and putting together a committee to be able to go over some dispatching EMA on what, what we're going to set in place for protocols. I'm checking with our other counties in my district, too, and I'm putting together a committee of those, and they've all agreed, and just so we can see more of a presence at dispatch, when they dispatch out, depending on what it is, we'll put the protocols so we can bring those to you guys, and you guys can approve what you want to see us on, so if anybody has any suggestions, get with me. But I have asked our first responders in the county and law enforcement in the county to sit down and have a meeting with us on that, so, that'll be going forward, and that's all I have. Like I said, I'll be checking with our other departments in our district, and I also include our cast in Miami County, because they, they butt up to us, they're not in our district, but I always check with them, so, that's it, guys.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Don. Brittany? Seems like your name was mentioned two or three times. Seems like your name was mentioned two or three times in the cause of.
I, I don't have anything left. Sorry.
She's happy about that.
Okay, so I don't have as much as John, but a couple things. So I sent the invoice or the quote for the implementation of Pro Q A police to Spillman. Honestly, I thought it was just a toggle we'd turn on, but of course, it's not that easy. So the quote was for six thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. And what that included was the Flex CAD delivery. I don't know what they're delivering, but. And then Pro Q A police interface software, and then Pro Q A inter, interface maintenance for one year. So that price includes all of those, so.
You got that in your budget?
Yeah. Unfortunately, when we implement fire, we're going to see another one for just about the same price come through for fire. So for all three disciplines, they charge the same for those, so. That's just what it's going to cost us to do that. So I just type that up, something more formal, just same what the quote's for, and hopefully your approval. So really, it doesn't do us any good to do this police implementation with, without having Pro Q A to be efficient across the board. So there's really, I mean, that was the goal with it in the first place, was to be able to have access to that Pro Q A with those protocols, just like we do medical. I just didn't know it was coming, so it was a surprise.
Nope, good point.
Okay, so you see what Brittany's got presented here for the Flex CAD delivery and Pro Q A as well. Six thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars, fifty cents. She said she has it in her budget. Do I hear a motion to accept this?
So, second.
Motion made. All in favor? Motion carries three oh.
Thank you. And to move forward with priority dispatch to kick off for police is actually this Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So on Wednesday, we're going to sit down with law enforcement to go through each protocol. There's some things we can take out. There's some stuff we can add, so we'll be working close with those guys to make sure it's structured to our jurisdiction. That way, it's useful and not asking too much information that doesn't apply. So that's the rest of this week. I think I mentioned the last meeting, I've been working hard on the binders to especially prepare for weather evacuation. So I have basically finished my to-go tote, I call it, with a mirror image of binders of contact information, weather. I have the police, fire, and EMS protocols in there. That way, if we have to evacuate, we're able to operate with all the information that we wouldn't dispatch. So that is pretty well done. I did go to Legacy Christian Academy last week. They had an emergency preparedness or education class for the high schoolers. So I presented a presentation. I consulted with Sheriff Heischman to just get some information. So I made a slideshow, and they couldn't believe what all nine-one-one and all that had to do, so that was pretty cool. They really loved the canine, so had some pictures of them biting and told them I recommended they didn't run because it hurts. They agreed. I spent the majority of my day with the S R O, Rick Utter. I told Deputy Utter back there that he is fantastic. I mean, he's really, I couldn't believe all the effort he's putting forth today. So what we did today was, we went to each school and we tested their, let's just, their lockdown procedure. So we set all of them up. We wanted to see their reaction time to where they called the nine-one-one center. They have mass text notification too, so we were just comparing times to make sure in real time what that looked like. So they were getting notifications within about thirty seconds, and then dispatch, there was a little delay, but we had to treat that like any other call that came in. So there might have been some time there just gathering information, but we were pleased today with the time that that was showing. Like Don said, we are, I actually sent out the email today to TJ from Rochester Fire, just to, I don't know that the plans for the tornado sirens have been updated in a long time. I'm not even sure that we're a hundred percent sure where all the sirens are. So we're basically starting this committee, our committee, to start fresh, see where things are. We did have a good siren response when we tested on National Weather Day, and there was only a couple with small issues. I think some work that we didn't realize we're working are just repaired in Newcastle. So we're all, we're in the right path with all these projects, so I'm really happy with all that. Dispatch has been really busy. We've actually had over a hundred calls several times in the past week, which is a lot of calls for us. So as the weather continues, I anticipate a increase with the calls too, especially with the weather changes. Aside from that, I don't have anything else.
So you're going to gather all of the township trustees, or just the, for fire and?
Yeah, so I, I had been in contact when I first became director with these township trustees, just to make sure that we're on the same page as far as who's responsible for maintenance and stuff like that, which has always been the township trustees, as far as the information that I have, and since I've been here, you know, when I started with the county a long time ago. So there's a good foundation of information. I just don't even, I don't know when that was even constructed. So really, we just need to really make sure, and I had made contact with all the trustees, made sure I had the right contact information, and I did make contact with each of them during that test to make sure that they went off. We did have a little bit of trouble down in Wayne Township, but the second time we set them off, they went off. So some are not rotating, but they're going off, and TJ's aware of those, and I think that was at the moose here.
When you set them off, who, whose responsibility is it to make sure they're going off? Is that the trustees or?
Well, I've been working with some of the amateur radio guys and EMA. We're going to try to get people starting to post up at these different siren locations at the time of testing, which is the first Monday of every single month at ten a.m., weather permitting. So we're going to try to get people posted up, and TJ and I went out to the different siren locations in Rochester, just to make sure that we didn't miss some. So the citizens are really great about reporting to us when the sirens aren't going off, so it's never really been an issue, to my knowledge, over the past fourteen years. So, but we're going to start doing that just to be more efficient, to make sure that.
When you set them off, you don't just set off one in one area, you set off all of them, right?
Correct, yeah. They all go off at the same time. So if there's a tornado touchdown in Wayne Township, they're going off in Newcastle, which the weather flows that way, so it really, but yeah. And the warning sirens are intended for people outside of a structure. People outside of a structure that have no other means of being notified of weather, which with phones now, you know, we're seeing a turn with that, you know, as far as notification goes, but that's what the sirens' main intentions are, notify people who are outside to seek shelter.
Any ideas roughly? Now, I know it makes a difference on the way the wind blows. How far away can you hear those sirens on an average? Any ideas?
Well, at the Kroger fuel station, I can hear the moose's siren. At first, I thought there was one at Columbia School in accordance with my home. So that's what I told TJ. I went out and was trying to find out where that siren was, and what I was hearing, I heard the two. One coming from the water department, which is there off of Race Street, and then I could hear the moose too. So we're, I would say within, it just depends. I mean, they're loud. I was going through Ben Towne, and theirs went off, and I felt like it was going to blow me off the roadway. So I mean, they're doing their job.
Yeah, I just didn't know how far out in the county it would reach, you know, when you don't have structures, you're just. And I know width, but they're going around, so if they're.
I'm not sure. I do know that TJ mentioned, and he had a really good idea, was maybe putting one over by the sheriff's department area, mostly for Country Meadows, which is a great idea, and then one up north by four fifty north, somewhere in that vicinity, because, not just because of Legacy Christian, but you know, you have a couple factories right there, but, so those don't reach far enough, so those would be two fantastic locations for new ones. But we've, TJ, I don't want to say we, I didn't have any part of it, quoted some, and they're outrageous.
They're for forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, upwards of forty. But we have to have them, so.
But I, I was talking to Megan, not Megan, excuse me. Yeah, you're Megan, yeah, yeah, I, I, but anyhow, she said her dad hadn't worked in a while, and she got one of Meiser Taylor Corning. It still isn't working, is that correct?
We are, we don't know.
Yeah.
We just know that it has power, but they, I don't know if anybody reported that they heard it or not.
Yeah, so there's some conflicting information whether it has power, was it doesn't, if it doesn't. I think we've confirmed that we think it does.
Yeah, our EMS.
We haven't confirmed whether it's going off. So we have the other two figured out up in Newcastle. Those two went off perfectly. So I told Megan that the next siren day, or, you know, weather permitting, that I'll try to, even if it's myself, we'll go up there and sit to see if it's actually going off, because we don't know for sure.
Okay, we've got a plan together, that's all I care.
Yeah, and like I told her, we're at the very beginning of this committee, I guess you could call it, to, you know, to organize this and just make sure that we have all the sirens on this list. I think there was like eighteen, and we could be missing some. We thought there was still one at the old firehouse, and there's not anymore, and that was just a self-set-off. That wasn't connected, hardwired, and like we have, but we're on the right path.
Appreciate you doing that.
Yep, thanks, Brittany.
I'm scared of storms, so the more sirens we got, the better. Thank you.
You can, whenever, whenever you want to.
Brittany?
Yes.
We've got some questions we've had concerning dispatch.
I think you sent us an email a couple of months ago, wanted to know about how to dispatch the coroner and when to dispatch the coroner.
Yeah, so my whole career as a dispatcher, we have always dispatched the coroner when an officer has told us to. But that's the way it's been my whole entire career, up until the past year or so. So I'm not sure what sparked the change, but that's the way it's always been.
So you've gone, you've waited until the sheriff's department says dispatch the coroner?
Or medics on scene, I mean, somebody. So there's been a conflict with, this, we're not the only county that's had a conflict. However, I've generated an email with the sheriff and the coroner, or whoever, or Jerry, or John, and told them that that's a battle between them, as far as figuring out how they best want to handle that. Because I don't know whose body is, is whose, or the crime scene, you know, that's not, I don't feel like that's dispatch's fight to fight. So that's the way it's always been. I don't know why it needs to change. It makes sense to me. I think everyone's respectful of everyone's position. So I feel comfortable with waiting for an officer on scene because they have things they need to do for a crime scene. The coroner has things that she needs to do, but like I said, that's not dispatch's fight.
I see codes as they should be dispatched together.
Yeah.
Whatever we're told to do, and that's what I said in that email, whatever they decide to do.
I don't know, that's, I don't know.
I think that's a good question for Holly, because it doesn't matter who you talk to, it's, it's a different story.
See how you interpret it.
We'll be respectful and dispatch whatever we need to. Like I said, for fourteen and a half years, it's always been when the sheriff or an emergency responder on scene requests it. So I'm not sure what sparked this, but we'll be respectful. Whatever you guys tell us to do, that's what we'll do. I just didn't want the girls getting phone calls wanting to know why they weren't getting called when it's not, it's not their fight, so.
It shouldn't be that.
We'll do whatever. I just think it's like, it's, it's a sketchy or touchy conversation, you know? I don't know who's got, I don't know. It's above my head.
See what Holly thinks when she reads it. The way I read it, they're supposed to do the investigation together. They're supposed to be called out together.
Law enforcement and the coroner?
Yes. They should both, when you got, when there's a death on scene.
As far as I know, I mean, they get the hip link when there's a death, so there's not much of a delay. Now, sometimes if we get a call and we can't come, I mean, we're not there, so we can't confirm it's a death.
If there's an accident, the police are going to go out and have to say whether they're dead or not.
As soon as we get confirmation that it's a death, they're being, the call type's being changed to death, and then that's when the coroner gets notified.
Because, well, we were there.
I think they are supposed to do it together.
Yeah, so if, Holly, if you can meet with the coroner and the sheriff and have a deep conversation about this, like I said, we've been kind of caught in the middle, and I don't think that that's our position to do it. No, it's just, it's.
Are they doing?
I don't, I don't want to use the word.
Mediated?
Yes. I think that's probably safe. Just because you don't want the coroner to come in and contaminate the crime scene, just like the deputies aren't going to be touching the body to contaminate her body. So it's just like, like I said, it's just, we'll do whatever we're told to do. I just, right now, I don't, it's kind of one of those things that, why fix, why fix it if it's not broke? Is my mindset, but I could be wrong. But they are, I can assure you, they are getting notification once we have confirmed it is a death, to the best of my knowledge. I'm not there twenty-four seven. Maybe twenty-three, but.
Yeah, a hundred and some hours last week, that's, yeah.
We'll look into it.
Okay, yeah, like I said, we'll, we'll do whatever we're told to do. I just know for the past fourteen and a half, it's worked just fine the way it was.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I kind of want to interject something here real quick, just as far as with the weather sirens. The new system that Brittany and I met with Trent on would help with that also, as far as our weather sirens, because we could put out mass notifications of tornadoes. We could put out, you know, a certain area has a gas leak, and it literally, the ones we're looking at right now would, would incorporate certain blocks on telephones. So once we have the, the public signed up, that's how it would operate. Another thing, just, I, I want to give this out, shout out to my volunteers. Friday night, we all know that we had weather coming in Friday and Saturday on our radar, you know, we're really paying attention. We set up, once that storm hit the Illinois line, I started a chat group of six of us from EMA. Once it got over towards the Indiana line was our decision-making, whether the six of us were going to hit four corners of our county. Now, out of the six of us, two of us were ham operators. So I had my ham operators watching the storm, watching the radio traffic coming across, the rest of us watching the radars and, and/or going out. That particular storm on Friday night did not develop the upper cloud system to maintain tornadoes. So we did not go out to our positions, but your whole time, the county had enforcement, and this is something that I'd like to see keep going within our EMA department, is, that was six of us. You guys were probably already in bed, knew this storm was coming, but we're all up, you know, till two-thirty. Yeah, three o'clock, watching the weather, making sure we knew if we needed to go out for you or not. So that, that's props to my volunteers, so.
Appreciate it, and to you too.
All the safety we can get.
That's right, that's appreciated.
You're welcome.
Sometimes EMA doesn't get all the credit it deserves, but they're.
Or my volunteers don't, yeah, the volunteers surely don't, so.
Okay, all right.
Hi. Uh, March eleventh, I emailed the D L G F, and I got my approval. So my ratio study for twenty twenty-four passed, which is good news. Personal property, we're in full spring. It's from now until March fifteenth. I talked to Josh. Next year, we'll be having a kind of decommissioned computer put in my office in the corner so people can do their personal property online. Eventually, that's what it's going to. You won't be able to do it in, in person anymore. We're going to allow it. We think it's not fair to our Amish community, the older people who aren't familiar with that. So we'll be there over their shoulder to help them out so they can file their personal property. April first, we're going to start printing our Form elevens, so that's going to be fun for all of us when those hit the mail, April thirtieth. On that note, the cost tables did increase. So I took about twenty different parcels from all over the county that were residential. And basically, what I came up with is, on my average, the prop, the house value itself went up about forty percent without me doing anything. That's just the cost per square foot, what it did on your house specifically. That also affected industrial, commercial, and business. I did not do a pool of that. I kind of focused what I was telling you on my residential end. What I did on my part to help with that is, when I did my ratio study and it got approved, I spoke to the state. So what we did on our end is, we dialed back our market factor, and my average was about fifteen percent. And that helps offset the increase that was hitting our residents. So basically, because here's the thing, the state sets in a guideline of what I'm allowed to increase a property to. They already exceeded it, and we can't, we can't have those expectations to the people that the state put on there if, if we can't offset something. So instead of doing a three-year average of home. So instead of doing a three-year average of home sales, we only did two. Uh, they were okay with that. And I just, I'm going to give you some, I know it's a lot of numbers, but I'm going to give you a couple of examples that are quick, just so you understand what happened. So in twenty twenty-four, uh, I have a house value of a hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars after we depreciated in age. It was getting multiplied by a market factor of a one point five five based off a three-year average. And then that meant that that home would be valued at a hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred dollars. That's what would go to the auditor before they put in any tax exemptions. Okay? And then that's what the tax rate would get applied to. Now, that hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and sixty dollar home because of the cost table increase jumps to a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. Instead of multiplying it by an increased market factor, we've dialed that down and it's going to be a one point two four. Otherwise that home value would shoot well over two, two hundred thousand. But it, it's enough that it balances down to a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred. Uh, I have another example I could throw at you. Basically, the house jumped, uh, and this is in a totally different township. It jumped thirty-four thousand, six hundred. Um, and based on it. And it's not like I can go across the board and just knock down everybody's market factor the same. So in that region, I was able to dial it down fourteen percent, but their home still went from eighty-four thousand, nine hundred to a hundred and sixteen, seven. So, you know, we're still seeing the increases. I'm just trying to make it less awful. Uh, and, and then I can only hope that people have all their tax exemptions in the right place to help offset that. So, you know, we're, we're working diligently to make sure everything's in place. I actually have, uh, my vendors coming in tomorrow. I've looked at all the land values. Uh, there's a few things we're going to dial back on some, uh, and, and everything I do, I do based off conversations. I've had multiple people at the DLGF to make sure I'm doing it legally. So, um, we are having an increase, but at the same time, I'm stopping it from being the full blown increase of what it could be because that's going to be devastating to our taxpayers. I don't want that. So, and neither do you. So we're, we're working on that. Um, on that same kind of note, I did get a last minute notification about four o'clock today. I don't know how familiar you are with House Bill fourteen oh two. Um, but basically it never made it to the House. It didn't get heard at all. Uh, but what they decided to do is pick a lot of it up and they are actually jamming it into Senate Bill one. Uh, so please, for the love of God, we need to pay attention to this. Because what's going to happen is it, it has a lot of huge changes with personal property. Uh, it has a lot of huge changes with lit. One of the kind of gross taxpayer homeowner, uh, issues is it's going to take your homestead over a five-year period from what it is now to almost zero if it goes through. So they just backdoored that whole bill that we thought was going to die into a functioning, living bill in, in the Senate side. So please watch that. I'm going to keep my eye on it too. Uh, we really need to make sure. It, it's just going to do so much with lit and just what, what our tax base will be in, in the coming years. So if we could just.
Yeah, me too. Pretty good. Leave my down last week or week before.
Yeah, I did get a chance to testify on it and tell them no and what we do to the county, but, uh, and they did, didn't give us any alternative revenue streams.
Yeah.
You know, with what they wanted to knock, there was nothing else to recompensate and we're already just hand and mouth.
Yeah, yeah.
What we're hearing is there's going to be something come out of it no matter what.
Yeah, there will be. Uh, I was really shocked that they jammed fourteen oh two into it though. Um, I was hoping that wasn't going to happen. And then I, I kind of have an odd request. Uh, I've had my girls kind of tracking and this is nothing new. Uh, and I'm not saying this to offend anyone, but, uh, my main line is a switchboard for, for most everyone in the county building. And it's really time consuming on our end in our office. So we've been tracking it for quite a while and what we came out with is, uh, basically the treasurer's office, fifty-two percent of our phone calls are for the treasurer. And, uh, they don't have voicemails. So we always give them the phone number to the treasurer. We do try to transfer, but if they're busy speaking with people, which we understand, it kicks back to us. Um, a lot of times they'll hang up because, you know, because they're frustrated. They call us right back. Um, but.
Except because they don't know who to call, is that?
I don't know, but it's a year. It's the first number they find, but it's like a year round issue. Yeah, so, um, but, but there's that, uh, ten percent kind of go to zoning and fifteen are to the auditor. And those fifteen percent pretty much lie in people looking for deductions. You know, what are my exemptions, which we don't handle. The last twenty-three percent really belonged to me, the recorder, but mostly the surveyors. So I don't know if there's anything we can do on our end. I know there's like press one for this, like the health department. And I, I think even your office, if you call an outside line, there might be something.
I would check with Josh.
We have nothing.
Josh should be one.
Are you okay if I do that? Because.
Yeah.
It's insane.
Yeah. I talked.
Because it has to be one common number.
Right.
As they dial and then do the one.
I don't mind if they call in, but if there's a way, if, you know, if you're looking for tax exemptions, they just get thrown there. But it, it's really time consuming because people don't know what they're asking. And then you're, you're five, ten minutes deep on each phone call and it has nothing to do with us. But getting them to give you the information to get them to the right place is a whole different ballgame. So.
That's a conversation you have to have with Josh and.
As long as you guys are okay with me having that conversation.
Yep. Well, Josh. I hate to.
Wonderful. I have nothing else. Do you have anything for me?
I think so.
Huh?
I will be hitting the schools next month for my first, uh, good government class with them. So they're going to learn about what the county offices do.
And who, and who to call.
Yeah, what number to call. So, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks Casey. Okay, Dawn.
Yeah, nothing.
Right, okay. Just sitting here closely.
Uh, this is our last warming center flyer for the season. Just wanted to give updates on this. I believe you already have that, correct?
Yeah, I said that too.
It has been one of the biggest and most interesting learning curves we have ever done. If I'm to be honest, lots of things that we would have never anticipated, um, to address. So grateful for Dawn and all of the others who have helped us, the churches, uh, volunteers. This month, um, has been the hardest to try to remember to call Brittany every single time that we have to have a closure. So we have, um, increased the temperature to forty-five. Um, each church is different based on insurance. We were attempting to try to make sure that we didn't just do a hard stop on every person that's been using the facility. So to assist with that and to assist with some of the other qualifications, we moved that to forty-five or less. But even with that, March.
Is that nighttime temperature?
That is nighttime. Um, one of the things that we figured out is we never qualified what nighttime was. It's the weirdest things that come across your desk that you think you've got every problem solved, that you don't. So those are some of the things we'll look at. Um, so we've had to make some decisions day of because it's the paperwork, I believe, says by three P M. Dawn will, uh, let us know, um, what the weather is and then we will post it on, or she'll post it on EMA and then we share it to Fulton County Hope. I tried to also remember to tell Brittany and those guys, um, about that, but, um, we have been closed last week more often, I think, than not. Um, we were open last night and actually had two new guests, um, a young man, or excuse me, a gentleman and his son who unfortunately became homeless because of an increase in rent. Did, they've been sleeping in their car. Um, so one of the things also that we have found to be interesting in this is, um, when Trent was speaking about the permanent shelter, that seems to be more of the need than we realized. I was talking to Dawn about that today. So that individuals can receive more wraparound services to be able to assist those individuals to help them out of homelessness. And so that's been fascinating and, and folks have determined that it is too warm for them to volunteer. So we are struggling with volunteers. So if anybody wants to volunteer, we would love to have you there. Um, so it seems like we have many, uh, men who are willing to volunteer. It's just been some of the ladies that we've struggled with. They have, um, children and sports and such, so. And then last but not least, as we look to end this for the season, we, I wanted to, uh, bring to your attention or at least begin the conversation regarding the supplies that we have, that the health department had purchased. So Dawn and I briefly talked about it today. Um, obviously, all of the things that are in the churches will need to go somewhere. Fulton County Hope, I talked to Virgil today. We have been receiving consistent funding from, uh, business every week. And we are happy to put that in a storage unit if that is what you see fit to have us do. But because it is stuff that was purchased by the health department, I did not want to just make that decision as to what we would do. But I wanted to start the conversation because two weeks is going to be here and get done before we know it. And I didn't want to not have that decided.
Yeah, we might want to check with the health department, see how they want to store it and if it was their stuff, I mean.
Yeah, I believe it was purchased with Health First Indiana funding, correct? So we're happy to, to, I mean, if there's no storage space for that, we are happy to do something, but we don't.
Do you want to get with Denise or you want us to check with her?
We don't have any storage.
We don't have any storage.
Yeah, that's what I was anticipating. I, I talked to Dawn about that today and I would assume that there's no place specifically in the health department. EMA's got a grant.
Do you want me to work on it?
Just get with Dawn. If you check with Dawn and the health department, make sure you guys, whatever you guys come up with.
And we'll find something.
Yep.
Yeah, we're happy to make it easy and do something just to come alongside, but didn't want to make that decision without bringing it up to your attention. So.
Cause I don't know if she got a track. I don't know what.
Yeah, I don't know all the details, but.
Yeah, just get with her. She'll tell you. You guys work it out and I'm, we're good.
So we're happy. And then, um, we will have a follow-up, um, appreciation, um, meeting of some sort with food for our volunteers because that was a lot of work. And we also want to get good insight as to what the next season looks like. So. Um, besides that, just still working on other things for Fulton County Hope, uh, working with Dave on some things for, um, domestic violence slash crisis pregnancy and, um, getting ready to meet hopefully with, uh, the H R, um, group here in Fulton County to talk about the next steps on the transportation studies. So we're plugged away.
Okay. Sounds good. Thanks Amy. Okay, I think that's all the department heads in there. Um, right?
Yep.
Okay. Bill.
I don't have anything. Nope.
Okay, you're sitting there good. Okay.
Getting some sunshine, aren't you?
That's right.
Okay. We've got quite a few things over here that we need to go over. We've had one grant through. NCI RPC. Reading through here. See, we have, this is a bill here for what they're doing through with Fedco. I think this is Fedco's.
That, that's the, uh, regional planning.
Central and regional planning.
Regional planning thing. Um, I got, I don't know if we have to do that now on this meeting. I had some questions on that. I thought that was supposed to be deducted out of the Fedco contract or was that for us to pay? I know we're supposed to pay. It was split it out, but I'm not sure it got taken out of the Fedco contract. Are you?
I have no idea.
Does anybody or what do you?
I think Michael made a comment about it, but I don't know if he did. We just need to check.
We need to check on that.
Everybody okay with the table on that for now?
Yeah, we table this one till.
Okay. Let's check on that if you don't mind.
Cause that's considerable sum and we don't, it's, make sure it comes the right way at the right time. Okay. Got that one tabled. Uh, did get this. I'll read this. Fulton County Commissioners concerning, uh, Macy, Niagara Lake and the grants they've got going down there. Response back, uh, Dear Mr. Gorman, the purpose of this letter is to request an extension for the completion date for Fulton County's utility plan to address the wastewater issues and the flooding of Niagara Lake area and nearby Macy, Indiana. We have completed the final draft and it's been approved by O B R A, but the approval was not yet received early enough for us to meet our publication deadline for our second hearing. We need to hold this before we submit the final claim without the need to schedule, or to schedule a special meeting outside of the record timing. We are requesting additional sixty days for the completion date of this project to allow the scheduling of a public hearing. One Fulton County, one nearby Miami County where Macy is located. To ensure that we have time to present the results to the public and obtain any feedback to issue our final claim for the second draw. It's agreed that all provisions and certifications of our grant agreement shall remain in full force and effect. Signed, Commissioners. So this is just basically an extension and Brian, you know a little bit about that and that's about all it is. It is only a grant?
Yeah, it's just a grant. And like I said, it doesn't financially obligate the county to anything. That's all. Niagara Lake and the project are doing to rebuild their sewer plant and address some of the water issues they've got down there.
Okay. And. City of Rochester. This is, uh.
Right of entry and, you know, so they can do lead testing.
Yep.
Okay. All right. We've got, let's see if, well, here I need to share.
They just want to come in and test some lead. That's basically what it is. Just to make sure that I understand it right, that we can understand it.
Okay.
I'm all for it. I'd, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve this. Favor. Motion carries.
There's several up in there.
Okay, I'll just hang on after the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Here we got the memorandum for the Wellness Center. And this is, uh, for employee discounts, what's, how it's written. I'll read through this here. Memorandum of Understanding Fulton County Wellness Center. Fulton County Employee Membership Discount, fifteen employees, thirty-five dollars a month. Uh, ten to fourteen, thirty-seven dollars a month. One to nine employees that join us, forty dollars a month. Employees to fill out the paperwork, sign the waiver and the agreement for one year's membership. Employees members, uh, show access all amenities, including all classes at no additional charge. Employees and members receive a card to scan each time they enter to attend. Fulton County Wellness Center will track all attendance of employees and send a report monthly to the county H R department. The report will contain the employee's name and the number of times they attended to the Fulton County Wellness Center. Uh, Fulton County Wellness Center will invoice Fulton County for each employee enrolled in the program and the county's responsibility to determine the requirements for the, uh, employee attendance to Fulton County Wellness Center. Okay, we had, have had this in place before it changed to the Council on Aging, what it is now, where we assisted the employees. Thoughts, concerns?
It's all the same thing, right?
It's basically the same thing, yes. Now, what we did have at that time, they had to require them to attend, uh, eight times a month in order, was it six times or eight times a month to have their membership?
Yeah, I didn't see that, didn't I?
It's not, that's what it says down here. It's Fulton County's responsibility to determine the requirements for employee attendance.
Well, I, I, my opinion is since it's got to do with money, the council's got to okay. I mean.
We can approve it pending council.
We approve it pending council, okay?
We probably need to put the day, the number of times of attendance. Prior, it was eight times.
In a month.
In a month.
Yep.
It didn't, it didn't state that on the writing.
It does not stay on this.
Yeah, that's just a memorandum of understanding between the county and Wellness Center because in the past, there was no agreement, nothing had written. And we were lucky if we got a bill when they decided to bill. So for, for H R to, to keep track of it was getting to be a nightmare. So when this all came about, we were like, well, let's get something in writing that everybody understands.
There should be a set tie, I mean, amount of dozens, because you can't just for one.
Well, one that wrote that, that was written by Mr. Baller.
Well, it's fine, but in the past.
He understands.
Well, I, I guess it says it understanding.
Our responsibility, so if we would write, either write that eight times a month into that.
Or make a policy and that way, uh, or H R knows how to, how to do it.
Well, H R already knows. Your policy is they have to do eight times a month.
Well, they put that in the minute, so it's in the minute. So that way, you know what I'm saying? It's legal. She can go back and check if there's any questions to, employee says, well, that, you know what I'm saying?
That's always been the agreement with the Wellness Center was eight times a month. It's just unfortunately. It's just unfortunately before, the Wellness Center was not billing in a timely manner. Which was causing a lot of issues. Yes, they know they have to go eight times a month. If they don't, they know they have to pay.
So I'll make a motion to approve uh with eight times minimum to get it paid for. Am I saying that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the attendance requirements would be eight, eight times a month.
Eight times a month, yep. And if you wanna write that off to the side, you're more than welcome to. I, I think, you Holly, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, so I made the motion.
Seconded that motion.
Okay, motion made, seconded to approve the MOU with Wellness Center with the addition of eight times per month added to this.
I'm sure you're writing on both of them.
Okay, are we, we need to sign both of these?
Yes, cause Doug will sign both.
Okay. Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor. Motion carries three oh. So, finish that up here. Delaying that. Then one more thing we gotta run through and here is a change in business travel. For personnel policy. And it's just here what's highlighted, right Kathy? Needs to be read.
The um
Or what's lined out?
The word per diem is to be removed from all areas of personnel policy. In exchange of per diem, it is now meal reimbursement for overnight travel. No meal reimbursements for day travel.
Okay.
You can read the gray as the official, that's the wording.
Okay, there's. We've got part of the stricken uh
Have an amount you can.
What has been put in?
That's what he needs to read, what's in the gray.
What's in the gray.
Yeah.
Okay, meal reimbursement will be up to fifty dollars per day with following breakdown of meals. Breakfast, ten dollars, lunch, fifteen dollars, dinner at twenty-five dollars. Itemized receipts shall be submitted to the auditor's office for meal reimbursement. Meal reimbursement does not include alcohol or tips. And then also on down, Fulton County shall not pay for employees' meal more than once. Employees Meals included, included in registration fees or in hotel room charges shall not be reimbursed. And overnight accommodations and as well as meal reimbursements are not allowed for meetings within a hundred and twenty miles of Rochester unless authorized by the county commissioners. And on down, where it says meal expenses, it's meal reimbursements shall not be, are not allowed for meals during normal duty hours for routine employee duties requiring travel. For example, an employee traveling to pick up supplies or equipment shall not be paid for meal reimbursement. And I think those are the changes. Correct?
I got one question, just to clarify. The way, way I'm reading this, you're only paying breakfast, lunch and dinner, the dollar amounts that you gave. Now, if somebody comes up and says I skipped breakfast, but I'm spending twenty dollars on lunch, that still don't count. Am I right? They don't get the fifty dollars a day, no matter whether they'll eat two meals instead of three, that they have to eat the breakfast, lunch and dinner in order to get the fifty.
Whatever meal receipts they turn in, but it doesn't, you don't get to compile them all and do one meal for fifty bucks.
I was just making sure for clarification, okay? Okay. Okay. Say that again? Did you have a question?
I say, is there gonna be hours broke down for breakfast versus lunch versus, I mean, eight to ten? Okay.
We got three receipts. Yeah, Kathy? Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, anybody out here? Comments, discussion?
I guess it doesn't quite make sense to me why you can't just spend, you know, if you get fifty dollars a day. I mean, sometimes in training and stuff, we're in training all day, so we wouldn't be able to, you know, and dinner anymore costs fifty bucks. I wasn't, so it for sure can't be combined. You could only spend, like, we don't spend anything throughout the day, then the evening surpasses the amount. I just wanna make sure I'm on the right page.
You knew that question was gonna come up, so I'm.
It uh, but yet, I think this is even if you're at home, you don't have to buy food, pay for food, fix food.
Sure.
This is reimbursement for, and it may not be the whole thing. This is what you're allowed up to, the twenty-five dollars. Okay, now, if you wanna go out to a lavish place and spend fifty bucks for seventy-five for your evening meal, you're gonna get twenty-five dollars back.
But I, Brittany, what you're saying is if you're not allowed.
Yeah, so like, for example, I'm, I mean, I don't care about the paper or not, you know what I mean? But if, if I'm in Indianapolis for a convention and I'm there all day and I don't eat, but then you get twenty-five per meal, but I only, I spend only fifty, you know, but I haven't used the rest of it throughout the day, you know, do you get, if I just?
Generally, when you're at a conference, your meals are already provided in your Like, when I go to, like, when I go to a treasurer's conference or whether I go to auditors, breakfast is usually provided, lunch is provided in your registration. The only one that probably isn't is dinner, if you, unless you find a vendor who will purchase it.
That was a bad example.
Well, if you do not find, if you do not, I mean, you go out to dinner on your own, you're allowed to spend twenty-five dollars.
Okay.
If you choose to spend fifty or seventy-five or wherever you choose to eat, that's your choice, but you're only allowed.
No.
No, ten, fifteen.
Ten for breakfast, fifteen for lunch, twenty-five.
I can make you, I can make you a copy of this when we're done.
It's, I'm with you. Yeah, we're good. I didn't, I didn't have the dollar.
We'll send it out tomorrow. Okay, she'll send it out there, buddy.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion questions? Anybody? Don't hear a motion.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made to accept the changes in the meal plans for the county, all in favor. Motion carries three oh.
This has been one of the hardest things to deal with. You guys know, we've dealt with this for years and nothing seems to work. I mean, we're always fighting something, but it's been, this last year, it's been extremely expensive of how the personal policy was for stuff that's gone on, so it's, something has to change, so that's why we're just trying to work it. We'll see if it fits for one.
You never know.
Yep.
But we'll give it a try.
We're gonna try to see how, what happens. You guys had a chance to look over the minutes from the last meeting?
Yep, I have.
Ryan?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded to accept the minutes from the March third meeting, all in favor. Motion carries three oh. Okay. You guys had a chance to look over the claims?
Yep.
Ryan?
Yep.
Okay, any, any questions or everything approved? Okay. We've got one, first one here is for solid waste fees, thirty-three thousand, three hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. Uh, utility bill, twenty thousand, four hundred twenty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. Wheel surtax for February, seventy-six thousand, two hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. Payroll, we've got a payroll amount of three hundred seventeen thousand, seven hundred fifty-four dollars and eighty-three cents with payroll deductions of a hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. Miscellaneous claims through March seventeenth, today's meeting, it's five hundred and two thousand, four hundred fifty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents. Certificate sale fees for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety cents. Lit distribution, eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Okay. March fees, fifty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety dollars and sixty-four cents. Disbursements from two twenty-seven, twenty-five to three five twenty-five is thirteen thousand, six hundred twenty-six dollars and thirty cents. Disbursements from two twenty to two twenty-six, eight thousand, five hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty-seven cents. And disbursements, two thirteen to nineteen, for eight thousand, two hundred seventeen dollars and eighteen cents. Disbursement from two six to two twelve, six thousand, one hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Those are claims. We've got transfer requests. These all. We've got quite a stack out of my lands. I was keeping thinking that these were stapled together, but they're not, are they?
No.
Okay.
I warned you at the last meeting. You guys are gonna start seeing a lot of transfers.
Okay, this is county general, county council. Consultant fee of nineteen dollars for appropriated to office supplies, nineteen dollars. Uh, transfer requests from county highway coming uh from Bit and New Equipment Stone, eight hundred dollars to consultant fee, eight hundred dollars. Prosecutor's Office Computer Maintenance Software, a hundred and fifteen dollars, thirty-two cents from the Software Maintenance Fund to office supplies. Okay, county general for county commissioners, uh contracts, twenty-eight thousand to building and other insurance, twenty-eight thousand dollars. Work fund, uh maintenance cost, seventy-two dollars, or seven dollars and seventy-two cents, legal advertising, seven dollars and seventy-two cents. This is to clear the negative amount in legal advertising claim that was submitted in January of twenty-five in the amount of fifty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents, line item, uh thirty-one, three oh one, had a budget amount of fifty dollars. Uh, county general, county council, county council budget, uh consultant fee of five hundred dollars to continuing ed for five hundred dollars. Probation, uh supplemental adult probation from probation officer number two, thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars to probation officer, thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars. I assume that's two different people. County general, county, county commissioners, uh equipment repair and maintenance, twenty-two dollars, reimbursement, twenty-two dollars. And the last one is county general through county council, consultant fee of thirty-five dollars, dues of thirty-five dollars. Okay. Travel requests, have you guys had a chance to look those over?
Yep.
In agreement on them?
Yep.
Um, I need one clarification. I think I asked Kathy and I think I got it. These has got per diems on them.
That's estimated numbers.
Yeah, but it's got per diems on them, so it's exactly how we, so does it go into effect immediately? These, these is not?
Was our meal reimbursement starting today as tonight's meeting or these retro?
That's the only place.
Those are overnight travels, so those are.
Yeah, but they're asking per diems, is the per diem?
Well, the per diem will change to whatever meal reimbursement they request.
Okay, well, that's what I'm asking. On these.
Those are all travel, those are all overnight travels. I took the day travels out.
Okay, okay, okay. So, so these, even though they got fifty dollars per diem, they still go back to this policy we just signed?
Yeah, we'll follow the new policies.
Okay, all right, I'm just making sure in case I get asked questions.
Okay.
All right.
All right, guys good with those?
Yep, I'm good. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the travel request, all in favor. Motion carries. And I think that's everything here. Let's see. We got a, you guys got anything else on old business?
I don't, I don't got any old business, do you?
No.
Okay, anybody out here with small businesses, let's be discussed. Okay, if not, new business.
I have nothing.
I don't.
Nothing.
Okay.
Kathy does, I think.
Grant?
Yep.
A grant?
Yep.
Grant application. Okay.
There was a grant applica, or not application, there was a grant that we were notified of that we have been offered money. It was from twenty-twenty-three. Uh, from my best understanding, it is to update the hazard mitigation hazard, mitigation hazard?
Plan.
Plan. In all of the research, all of the conversation, um the county did not apply for it. It was applied for by the state of Indiana through IDHS, through FEMA. Indiana consequently got money in the last month or whatever. So they now have offered Fulton County twenty-four thousand dollars and some change with a twenty-five percent match, so the county would have to match eighty-one hundred. My issue with this grant is, one, nobody knew anything about this grant because it was done, like I said, two years ago. What I did find in the minutes between commissioners, council, there was commissioner meeting, Gail said she was applying for grants, that's all that was said. A later meeting, there was something mentioned about mitigation plan, but still not any kind of cost, not what this grant was, what this grant was going to be. All they had to do was do a letter of intent. In the December twelfth, twenty-twenty-three council meeting, she stated to the council that there was this grant, she wanted to apply for it, they were requesting a letter of intent of which this letter of intent was to be written on county letterhead, was to be signed by the president of the commissioners. The letter I received back from the state, it was not written on county letter, a letterhead. It was not signed by the commissioner, president of commissioners. Also, the email I got back from IDHS says it's offered to us, it does not say we have to take it. If you take it, where's the eight thousand dollars coming from? What is this going to cost to even begin to do this? Because I guarantee you, if this mitigation plan is this far out of date, it's gonna cost probably.
It is coming due.
I, I realize that. I have no issue with the fact that it needs to be updated. It's just, we've got a grant here that you're asking me to sign my name to. I'm responsible for, this is federal money. And if anything goes wrong, I'm the one that gets written up, nobody else does. And I don't like not having documentation. And also in my research, Fulton County does have a grant policy plan. Unfortunately, it has not been enforced, which I want to enforce that going forward. If anybody wants to apply for grants, they need to, they need to follow the policy that is in the auditor's office, which means you come, you fill out that this is the grant I'm gonna apply for. All documentation comes to me, everything comes to me, everything goes through my office, unfortunately, because like I said, I'm the one that's ultimately responsible. So, but as far as this one now, I don't think the county should relegate themselves, or not relegate, but not
Obligate ourselves.
Obligate ourselves to something that we know, we have no idea what this is gonna cost us, what the details are, who's going to do it. Let alone, like I said, where's the, where's the eight thousand dollars coming from? But if eight thousand's only gonna be a drop in a bucket for something that's gonna cost us fifty or sixty thousand. Except the letter of intent was never written on county letterhead, it was never signed by the commissioners.
Okay. Thoughts, guys?
I don't know if it's worth this call, a statement of chaos, just to ask if there's a way to deal with this or just?
The ID, the, I, I can pull the email up. It'll take me, I'm going to have to pull it up. But it does not say we have to take it. It is offered. That's all it says.
I don't know. I mean, if we're, I mean, if it's part of a plan that, that Dawn knows about, that's, I don't know if it's worth looking into or we just forget about it and go on.
I think our, our forward moving, I agree with what Kathy's saying. This was all prior to Kathy and myself, and we're trying to work through this. Our mitigation plan is coming due. It is usually what you do with the mitigation plan is you contract it out and they write your mitigation plan for your county. I've never dealt with one of those. I can tell you it would probably take close to what this total grant would be with the eight thousand. In talking with my liaison from IDHS, he confirms the, pretty much the same thing. Wells County received their money. We were granted it too, as she said. We wouldn't have to take it, but I, what I would say right here, right now is let's table it, get all bags in a row. Maybe do what, you know, call down and say, hey, can, I hate to call IDHS out on, or FEMA out on their error. But we have an issue in our own local government of signing this because it was presented only in this letterhead. I think if we're just upfront and honest with them, it's all going to work out. I think if we go that direction and try it that way, because if not, what's the, what's the hurt if, if we don't try to see what they want to do to rectify it? And if we can't get it rectified outside of the eight thousand, where's it going to come from? I get that. I get that.
Well, that's the problem. Where's the eight thousand dollars going to come from? Okay, because you, you have to have invoices with your encumbrances, so you can't use.
I turned the invoices in with my encumbrances, so I got that. Okay. Worst case scenario, I have an equipment fund. That's all, I mean, I've got that would cover it.
I bet I don't know if you can pay it out of the equipment fund.
Can we transfer it to a fund?
You could probably do that, but.
I'm just trying to help you guys out.
I have, I'm sorry. I still have the issue is that a person wrote the letter, not on the letterhead, that she told the council that she was going to write it on. It was not signed by the appropriate person.
I agree a hundred percent with you.
And at the same time, and I find fault with the council for this too, is she told them she had no idea what this was going to cost. So they blindly let her go for it when you have no idea. I just think there's, there's, there was a policy in place. There is a policy in place on grants. And it wasn't fault of.
On our, our mitigation plan, as you said, it's coming due. Is there a certain termination date on that?
I think it's due this fall. Don't quote me on that, but I'm pretty sure it is due.
How often do you have to review these? Every two years?
Just to see what state board of council.
No, I have no, I have no issue talking to them. I don't know what the answer is going to be. I can reach out.
So. It doesn't hurt, you know, it's just either you can maybe get a chance of getting the grant with an eight thousand dollar out of pocket, or we're going to have to cough up thirty thousand dollars by fall to get this done. So, I mean, it's worth a chance to talk to state board of council.
Yeah.
I mean, just to tell them.
I mean, it's a grant. They're not going to.
The procedures as far as it is, is going to be okay, or they're going to, we're going to get dinged if we go ahead. I guess that was my question.
But this is federal. This is not state. This is federal grant money.
State board of council, they may have an end. I mean, they may be able to point you in the right direction or, they do federal audits too, right?
I've got you, I've got you one answer right here. It looks like our mitigation plan, and as I said, is this fall. It's September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five is, when ours is due, our mitigation plan is due. That did come from the state and the same representative. I believe you were talking with Dawn Mason. Yeah. So these are the same emails that all of us have been in on, is when it is due for the mitigation.
I don't have any problem table until the next commissioners meeting to get some more information.
You don't see what we're doing there?
I'm not sure it'll get us anywhere, but we can, don't hurt to try.
All right.
And, and she is right in the wording, which I know you are, I just want to give them the wording. Where it says, I would recommend taking advantage of this grant as we cannot guarantee grants in the future, as we all know. And it looks like that our grant was going to expire. So as she said, she can't, they can't guarantee it, that it would still be there later on down the road and to take in.
We'll talk in two weeks, we'll be able to, need some more investigation. The next commissioners meeting.
I'll make a motion. We just table this until our next meeting and see if we can gather any information. Maybe we talk with the federal, whoever got that, and say, hey, here's our situation. I mean, between that state board of council, maybe what we can, if there's a solution, if there's not, we'll just move on.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded to table this grant. All in favor?
It was supposedly published. I mailed my part off to the other party.
What are we talking about, can I ask?
Where?
Is it town or is it?
No, it's in the Tippi Shores area.
Okay.
So I, I got that.
So he'd have done that through Heather then, right? Through the area plan, Heather?
Heather and area plan.
Yeah, so I was down in the zoning and planning.
Yeah.
I was here Friday, actually, to pay some stuff I had to pay, and I confirmed that I was supposed to be here today.
Oh.
Yeah, I got the letter, I got a picture of the letter because I had to mail the letter to the other party. And I was supposed to be here today, uh, March seventeenth at six P M.
I'll have to talk to a planning commissioner. I have no idea.
We haven't got anything.
Wow.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I haven't, and I understand how sometimes things, you know.
Normally, we don't do the vacation that comes through. The planning department.
Yeah, they told me I had to be here, and they told me to send that to the other party, and then I had to be at the commissioners meeting today.
I'm sorry, but.
No, I, no, I, I understand. It's not, you know, it's something I can, I, I started this process over a year ago. And nothing was done, so I come back a couple of different times, and then finally, okay, we have everything for you. Printed off maps for me, who I needed to call, who I needed to send letters to.
We hang, and I don't, I don't know.
No, that's fine. It was kind of nice to, to sit here and see.
Tell us the truth now.
It really was. I mean, I, I personally enjoyed it, not my wife.
But you have.
She'd probably rather be at home.
You have all your paperwork and everything that shows receipts of who you, you notified everybody, right?
Yeah, so there was only one other party.
Yeah.
That, that was notified, and it was just three alleys in a road.
So that's, we can table, or I guess, there's nothing to table.
There's nothing for us.
I guess we just bring it back.
Yeah, we never got.
We never got anything.
I guess we can.
All I got is a copy. I, like I said, I had to take a picture of it.
That letter, I don't know how to get it.
Well, it's a lot to talk to Heather.
Yeah, we're going to talk to Heather. Heather will have it.
Yeah, this was done January twenty-fourth.
Is it better for you to have a day meeting or an evening meeting?
Uh, evening, for sure.
So we can just talk with Heather and see what happens, and then maybe a month from now, because our next meeting's a day meeting at nine o'clock, so. If you'd like an evening meeting, we can just talk hers, get it straightened out for you and.
Does that, does that hurt you on the time? I mean, is that killing you or anything?
No, it would have to be an evening. I cannot be here.
As far as maybe for urgency.
Oh, no, 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 no. Like I said, I've been working on this well over a year and just really wasn't too sure as what steps to take. And after reading and talking to people, people here.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, so, um, I will, so. Should I, should, so what steps should I take? Come back and go back to the?
I would. I would, I'd reach out to Heather.
Kathy's going to check, but I would reach back to Heather.
Okay.
Talk to her.
Yeah, it's just.
Something got missed somewhere.
Yeah.
Sure, and, and I understand.
Yep, I'm sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
It's usually.
I think this is the first.
As I said, we have, I mean, this can be, I mean, this commissioners meeting, we haven't done that. That's always in their office.
So.
Okay.
Any other new business? Anything else needs to bring up? If not, I entertain a motion to recess. Did you?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Thanks, everybody, for coming.